Good evening and welcome to the Selectment's meeting of May 29, 2018. First up is a salute to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion when we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor. A motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Make a motion when we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor. Before we get on with the department head and committee chair updates, I want to just mention that the Odyssey of the Mine team of Acton took their trip over the weekend and competed with lots of, not just the 54 people in their category, but lots of teams were there. But I want to let people know that they did play 16 in their category.
Division.
The Balsawood project, and that's out of 54 teams. So that, they did a great job.
Great.
Congratulations.
Excellent.
Department head, committee chair updates. Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Whitney Baker in the Moussum Lake watershed.
So per her last presentation, I did send an email out to the road commissioners, Ms. Hart and the board. So unless you instruct me otherwise, we're going to take it off the agenda and see if they, you know, get together and organize some sort of meeting unless the board wants, has some further direction for me.
I think it sounds like a good plan if the, if they can coordinate with the road commissioners which roads were going to be worked on.
Right, and she only has so much time for this year.
Right.
I forget what the time limit was.
I think, didn't I CC'd you guys on that email, right? So, I mean, I can, you know, put it on there to follow up on my end, but, I mean, I've reached out to them and I would hope that somebody will reply all of the email and see if it's something they want to schedule.
Okay.
I'd just like to have a way to contact her, because I think the private roads group may be able to help her too, because they're also looking at grants.
Yep. So I think I CC'd you on the email as well, so...
Yeah, but I didn't get her email.
So if you just hit "reply," it'll pop right up. I'll show you after.
Okay.
But I'll make sure, I'll write it down for you as well.
So what you're saying is if, if the town doesn't use the grant on the town roads, the private roads may use the money?
Well, the private road associations have a lot of experience with this kind of grant, and our road has done two of them. I know Lakeside Drive has done others. We've done it through AWI, but she can get help through us too.
Okay.
And I think being at the private roads group tomorrow night, she'll be with people that have already gone through what it takes to get the grant.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So, I can't remember what the email was dated, but we'll give it a week and see if the road commissioners...
If anybody replies.
Yeah. Cemetery, Hobbs Farm.
I spoke to the HAMs today in regards to the follow-up. They haven't had a chance to go over and look at it, so they aren't ready to commit to anything. So as of now, I don't have any update for you.
Okay. Atlantic broadband agreement.
Sent that to Brad, as you requested. He said that for the most part, they agreed to everything that you asked for. There were a couple of major changes that they didn't, and he wanted a little more time to review it.
Okay. Siding project.
I'm just going to take it off the agenda. I'm not sure what else. I mean, we're just not...
Nobody is.
Did you ever check with the folks that did the ramp? I happened to think of that this morning.
The folks that did?
The ramp over here on the H Road.
Oh, um... Well, I mean, we've had it advertised. I didn't reach out to that company personally, but...
Yep. I know we were looking for just names and whatnot, so just...
Roverers, yep. I can send him an email. I had a couple, I mean, a couple of people called me with, and Karen was one of them that thought they might have somebody they could send our way, but unfortunately, we haven't heard from them. But I'll put one more post out there, but I'm just going to take it off the agenda.
Yep.
We put it in a couple of different newspapers now, and I think it's just a busy time of year.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll have their projects lined up. Moussum Watershed Dam Coalition member.
All right, so today you got to meet Adele.
Yep.
Good.
All right, how'd it go?
Good.
Good.
I think she thought the job was going to be, like, learning more about the actual dam functioning and not necessarily the planning and budgetary piece of the meetings, but...
Yeah. It's, there's not a lot that goes on with that meeting, really. I mean, it's, we look at the dam. Sanford takes care of the dam. They come to the meeting and give us updates on what needs to be done and what is going on and whatnot, as far as repairs and whatnot. So it's not, you know, it's not a, not a, not a big project, really, so...
Was she still interested, though, or...
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely.
She said she'd do it, so, yep, so that's good.
I happen to have an appointment ready.
The Selectmen of the municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Moussum Watershed Dam Coalition member. This is to Adele Squitchfield. Hopefully, I said that right. Within and for the municipality of Acton until June 30, 2019, given under our hand this 29th day of May. It says 22nd.
Then you have the wrong one. I have another on my desk. I had, I think I've had one ready the last three weeks, so I do have a 29th one somewhere.
On this 29th day of May, 2018. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we appoint Adele Squitchfield to the dam coalition.
I'll second that.
Great. Thank you, Adele. All in favor?
You can just hand change the date on that one if you want, it's fine.
Okay.
So I told you last week, kind of what the thought was behind that. I know that you guys received one email, printed it off for you, which I think you guys have all seen, but you said that you wanted to discuss some of them.
Yep.
So I didn't know where that stood, if you had any additional thoughts.
So, somebody at the last week's meeting heard of the request and would like to throw in some, some response to that. They don't think it's a good idea to, to be asking for the figure given based on three items. It seems Ken should be driving less now that he has an assistant to share the workload, so why base it on past years? Some years, like last year, he drove up to Lewiston to see a tiny house project or some sort, which seems to put unnecessary mileage on the car, and that's the type of mileage that wouldn't be paid over and over again. He complains that too much time is being spent dealing with his mileage figures and feels that he's putting things down like .01 miles going from one house to the next driveway. And, yeah, so I think the first item seems reasonable to me to contemplate, because I think the deputy CEO will be taking on some of those inspections and whatnot, and ordinance violations. So I don't know how to deal with that money piece. I don't know if we want to bring it back to the CEO office and ask, well, how much of this driving will be split with the new deputy?
Maybe it's something we should, you know, take some time to, where it is going to change, to maybe see...
Yeah, I don't know if we even need to get that in-depth into it. I mean, we've got a couple other department heads and whatnot that figure their mileage, and it seems to work out pretty good. I, I'm happy with it the way it is, personally.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he's going to be driving less, and Brendan's going to be driving, and, and so...
You, for instance, run downtown, you know, there's deposits, there's a number of different things.
I got your tub. I got your tub. Did you see it?
I saw that. A number of different things over the course of a month, that some are repetitive, actually, but, I mean, they all, it fluctuates. I just, I think mileage is mileage and leave it the way it is.
Okay.
I do too.
So...
Right at this point, just...
It's...
So no stipends?
Maybe reconsider it after the deputies, I mean, after some time's gone by, we can see what other...
That's what I was going to say, maybe we could revisit this in another six months to, to a year to kind of see, you know, if, if he's doing less, and then...
I mean, it was a good thought, but I just...
It was, and I, yeah, I like the idea of a stipend to relieve him from having to track it, but at the same time, the deputy's going to be taking on...
I mean, the whole world operates on mileage and has to keep track of it, so, you know...
Okay. Go let him know.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, can I say something about this?
Yes.
Couldn't that be kept on a spreadsheet? That way...
There is a spreadsheet.
Oh, because that's quick. I mean, that wouldn't take two minutes a day to do.
Well, it's, he doesn't drive to the same spot every day. He does his own spreadsheet.
Yeah.
But it, you know, I don't know exactly how he keeps track, but it's, he's not doing the same thing each week.
Yeah, well, that's why if you had something in there for every day or multiple trips a day, you know, he could just put in like .2, .3, .9.
I mean, I think that's what he's doing, and he enters it all into the spreadsheet.
And that wouldn't take any time at all. I mean, I had to do that before, and it was easy-peasy.
Well, he, it is a lot. He provides sometimes two and a half pages of different jobs he's done throughout the month.
Right, but that's not done on a daily basis?
I, I don't know how he keeps track.
Yes, it is.
Every, every... He does every day.
So when, when he goes from A to B, he's got mileage. B to C, mileage. C to D, mileage. I mean, the other, you know, the other thing is, you know, I don't know what a compromise would be, a daily total of mileage?
Instead of...
You know, instead of a stipend. I mean, what if, you know, in the beginning of the day, he, you know, he's got point, you know, he's got zero miles, and at the end of the, you know, end of the day, we say, okay, put 25 miles on, and then at least, you know, you, you would be able to, through a paper trail, go back and look at all the inspections on, you know, May 29th and where he went. It's not specific-specific, but, you know, it would cut down some on the, on the paperwork, but I can talk to him and, but he does track A to B. I mean, he tracks every single stop.
Yeah.
And he, you know, he writes on there, you know, every, you know, Sanborn Road, H Road, I mean, he's got, they're very detailed.
Just, we don't see it. We don't see it.
No, you do.
I mean, well, no, no, what I meant is we...
End of the month.
At the end of the month. It's not like we're, so, when she's saying it's a couple pages, it's, you know...
Well, I mean, in some days, I mean, he could go to, you know, 10 or 15 locations.
Yeah, yeah. So you'd have 15 quick entries.
Right.
You know, and it adds up at the end of the column.
I like the idea of a daily.
Okay. Let me, um...
Whatever. I want it to be easy, easier. It is time-consuming, but he's a very detail-oriented guy that doesn't want to miss a beat, so...
Yep. So either keep it the way it is, or Ed, what are your thoughts on daily? I mean, if, if, I mean, if it was daily and still had a list of all the locations...
Still going to tell you what the mileage is.
Right.
I mean, he's still going to pay him a percent, you know, the percentage of the mileage, so, yep. I mean, I don't care how he keeps track of it.
Well, but if it was daily, it wouldn't, you know, I mean, it would just, it would just have the date and the amount of miles, and it would just say inspection, so it wouldn't say from...
That's really all it needs to be, but...
It doesn't need to be from A, B, C, D.
Yeah, but he, you know, that's up to him, how he wants to keep track of it that way, so...
But that, I'm saying that may be less work, too.
Yep. 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 Yeah, if he's happy, just, you know, if he knows he's going to have five inspections, and he comes in and takes his mileage when he starts the day, and his mileage when he ends, I'm happy with that.
Because he doesn't go anywhere else that wouldn't be work-related, so...
Right. Yep.
Right, maybe that would be a bit easier.
All right, let me talk to him.
Yep.
Okay, we're into new business. We have the zoning ordinance.
So this is a follow-up from an email that the board received, saying that the resident feels like their present zoning ordinance may not be up-to-date, and there's some concerns that some things aren't being covered. Although last fall and summer it was briefly discussed, and to update it after a few tries, nothing happened. It was decided that the present zoning ordinance was the one that the town was sick with. That decision seems to be hobbled, the, seems to hobble the code enforcement officers in what they think they can ask offenders to remove. Other towns have maintenance zoning ordinances, but Acton doesn't. Now that there is a second code enforcement officer, it might be the time to look into this. Would you consider having a citizen group meet to discuss these ideas and bring them to the Board of Selectment or Planning Board? So that's a question regarding the current zoning. Thoughts on a citizens group to discuss and research maintenance zoning?
I think that if a maintenance zoning ordinance were going to come into place, it would come from the citizens, not from the board. I think that the citizens, you know, a group of citizens that would know the other taxpayers would pass, so it would have to be a property maintenance ordinance that's doable or doesn't encroach on property owners' rights. I think Kim has, you have an opinion on property owners and being told what to do when you're in property?
Right. You know, I just...
I don't know how Ed feels.
I don't feel like we need to, you know, do this, I guess is, is my feeling. I pay my taxes and, you know, I, I don't want to be told, you know, what, what to do. There may come a time when I can't take care of it. I don't know. I just, well, I do know, I don't agree with it, but, that doesn't matter. Maybe we need to do a poll or, or...
Exactly.
Or something to get the whole town, because there could be a lot of people in town that want that, and...
Or letting the, you know, before getting a group together and having them spend the time and effort on putting together a, a property maintenance ordinance, I mean, how does the entire, you know, how does the majority of the town feel?
Right.
Is that something that they would want to do? What do you think, Ed?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of telling someone what they can do with their property. I mean, I've said that all along. Granted, a piece of property, you know, your next-door neighbors, the way they keep their property should not bring the value of your property down, but there's a fine line there. I mean, it's a farming community, we have different things, so...
Yeah, that's kind of how I feel.
Yeah, it's...
I use pallets from my compost pile that might not be attractive to some, but at the same time, if my neighbors has so much stuff on their lawn that my property val, I can't sell my house, it, then it becomes an issue. So I don't know. It's a fine line.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is.
It is a fine line. So, you know, that's kind of how I feel. A poll wouldn't be a bad idea, so...
I mean, it would be nice to, at least then you know. I mean, if, if people really are in favor of it, and then we move, you know, move forward.
I mean, you're going to have to know about what a maintenance ordinance would look like to even ask a poll, because that's going to be the first question. Well, what does it mean? What's the...
Right. So maybe the, you know, the, maybe five to 10 top, you know, yes or no questions that, you know, we could put together a poll that, you know, maybe for a month or so, that we could run through the office with everybody coming through. This is a really busy time of year, you know. Do you feel that, you know, the town should allow outdoor furniture on the lawn? Do you feel there should be a maximum, you know, that grass can't be mowed over, you know, it has to be mowed after a certain amount, or, I don't know what, what the thought is behind it, but maybe if you can drive, you know, 10 questions, you might be able to get a better idea as to whether, you know, they're supporting a property maintenance. Or maybe it's just, you know, looking at the current zoning. If there's something specific that, that the individuals are, you know...
I mean, we kind of went through this a few months ago, and we, you know, code enforcement seemed to feel as though we have things in our current zone, zoning, that deals with it, but, so...
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
So when that was, Karen McManus, when that was last revisited a few months ago, the zoning ordinances were not complete in that, in terms of some items, the code officer couldn't act on them. So let's say if you had your broken couch and some oil cans and things that were dripping into the ground, and polluting the ground, and/or being washed down into a stream from that property because it wasn't maintained, those are some of the issues that are not listed in the current 1974 zoning ordinance that we have. Therefore, the code officer cannot act on those and ask the property to remove them, so...
That would be a good question. I mean, like environmental hazardous waste, like, like you're saying, and I would definitely support, you know, I don't want anybody polluting our town and things like that, you know, I...
But if you have, say, your old couch on your yard, and it's been there for three years, obviously you have no intention of removing it and taking it to the dump, so...
So that would be a question of, would you allow out, indoor furniture outdoors?
Right.
I guess, you know, we'd have to word things, so, broken, non-useable items that have, you know, been passed a certain timeframe that are sitting there. So I don't think that the length of someone's grass is an issue.
I was just throwing out things from...
But some towns...
Well, you guys, that people had mentioned in the past. I was just off the top of my head.
But some towns actually do that. You know, you can't hang a clothesline, or something like that. I'm not interested in those types of things, but as you already stated, I think when we have property value, that comes into consideration here. And when you say, oh, I don't believe that property maintenance, or somebody should tell me the right to do something on my yard, well, we all live under rules, and that's why we have, you know, protection, so that people can't have their old cars leaking oil into the ground, or they can't throw their paint cans out, or just pollute, or do bad things. And part of that is also keeping a reasonably decent property looking nice, so that your neighbor is not affected, because as soon as you say, well, I can do whatever I want on my yard, you know, you are affecting someone next door, like you said. But, I mean, a compost pile is one thing, I don't think it, unless it's offensive and smelling, and rats are coming, no, no one's going to say that. They have to be reasonable assumptions of a level that can be better than what we have right now, because the zoning is such that the code officers cannot act, at this point, on certain things.
So it sounds like we'll get, we could meet and come up with, you know, five to 10 good questions?
And we have her submit the questions that she thinks might be, I mean, because I'm guessing that you would lead the, the citizens group, so, I mean, you know, maybe she could submit five to 10 questions. And, I mean, they need to be yes or no, so that we can survey them and put them in, you know, into a spreadsheet for the board, and let the board review the questions and then decide where we go from there?
Whether there's enough interest into, yeah.
All right, we'll let you look at the questions first, and then, so if you want to...
She said her name.
She said her name.
Karen McManus.
I live on Orchard Road.
So Karen, if you want to draft up those questions and send them over to me, the board will review it, put it on the agenda for next week.
Great. I, I will not be able to be here next week, but I can...
Okay, the week after.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have agenda. We're going to talk about the agenda and public comment.
So Ed spoke to me last week with a couple of concerns and thoughts that he had, and I kind of mentioned them till the end, so I thought we'd kind of bring them up, and, you know, you guys, so you set the, you set the rules for your meeting, and there's been, you know, some talk that the, the public can't, can't comment on an issue, you know, that you may vote on. So there was conversation about, you know, did you want to move public comment to the beginning of the meeting, so that they would have a chance to see the agenda and give any opinions that they have throughout it? Or you can do what you've allowed tonight and go back to allowing them to speak, you know. Originally, we weren't going to let them speak, and now we've let two, so, and I'm not, I'm not questioning you, I'm just saying that, you know, maybe you could put a limit, you know, if you wanted them to be able to speak on each item, you could put a limit, a shorter limit on those, you could reopen it up to everybody, see how that goes. The agenda idea was, you know, we can put something on the website, you know, generally after Tuesday's meeting, by Friday, we should have a really good idea of what the agenda's going to be. I mean, we could put, you know, a draft agenda on there by Friday, if, if it's something that you want, you know, my office to restructure and organize. I mean, but, but it would really be time-consuming. I mean, put it on there once on Friday with what I have, based on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, from your meeting. But every time something gets added Monday or Tuesday, I'm not going to have time to keep going and updating the website.
I would say just, maybe we do it Friday.
No, I wouldn't update the website.
So you do it Friday, and that's a, you know, that's better than nothing, because remember, by law, you don't have to post an agenda at all.
Right.
We do it on Friday, and that's something, and then Tuesday, there will be more items, because things always come up on Mondays and Tuesdays.
If things come up, right.
But that would be something, I mean...
Will adjust the agenda at the beginning of the meeting as needed, but I wouldn't go and update every time something comes in, that's time-consuming.
No, but it's, but what I'm asking, is it okay? So if we put this on there and put it as updated as we can, say by noon time on Friday, or let's say the end of the day on Friday, I can keep updating my hard copy, though, and give you a more up-to-date one on Tuesday, right? I don't have to bring the agenda from Friday to the meeting. I can bring one like I normally would.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so...
I mean, you'd be bringing the one from Friday, but you're just going to have a bunch, just have some additions to it.
It's going to have additions to it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's something.
Yeah.
Or even deletions.
Yep.
Yeah, possibly.
Yep.
So, I mean, that might, you know, that might help some. And then, public comment? What are your thoughts and ideas on that?
My thoughts, and some people might not like this, is by law, we don't even have to offer public comment. I'm just going to put it out there. And, secondly, it was requested that the public comment section was getting a little out of control, so we did put the three-minute time limit on there to try to, to rein people in, because it was becoming too much.
So the idea between, you know, let's just, for example, if we go back to, you know, the mileage policy and the zoning ordinance, you know, you had input from the public on both of those things that, you know, you may or may not have taken into consideration. So how do we continue to allow that, you know?
I wonder if could we move the public, does it make sense to move the public comment before the new business? Because the old business, we discussed the week before.
Right, and it's really just informational.
So that, that's, yeah, that's just updated information.
Right.
And emails and whatnot could be sent on those things. But if you moved it to before the new business, made it an area that the public could comment on the new business, because that's their main concern, I believe.
And I guess, and just to be, you know, be proactive, looking at the other side, I mean, let's, we'll take Dennis, for example, because I always like to use him as my example. I mean, if he gets the agenda even on Friday and it says zoding ordinance, if public comment is above that, if he didn't write that email, he's not going to have any ideas, or he's not going to know.
Right.
You know what I mean, that he's got thoughts on that, you know what I mean? So it's kind of...
That's why, I mean, it seems silly to put public comment at the beginning, because nobody knows what we're going to talk about, really.
Right.
And then if we, at the end of the meeting, there's no public comment, they're going to have to wait till the next week to make their comments. So it makes sense to keep it at the end.
What about speaking after we, just like we did tonight, but keep it at a three-minute, As long as things don't get out of control, or?
Well, I don't feel as though, um, I, well, the woman who spoke on the zoning ordinance was at, her name was on, the, I mean, her name was attached.
Right, and Mrs. Hart spoke on, you know, I had a question on the contacts, but that was pertaining to her already.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is, so want to stick with the original, so you'll allow the questions if they pertain to, directly to that individual?
Right.
All right. So you want to leave it, public comment at the end, and just go for now?
Yeah, it's fine.
And I'm fine with the three minutes. If I, I feel if somebody has something more to say than three minutes, then they need to be put on the agenda for the following meeting.
True.
And we tell them, right, and we tell them over and over and over.
Yeah.
That they can call and get on the agenda for noon if they want. All right, so, um, bear with me as we try to get these agendas online by noon time, end of the day on Friday. It'll at least be a draft and something to look at.
Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention was that we were elected to make decisions, and I think it's great to hear the public comment on them, but it, it may, may not have an impact on what, what we vote on up here. I mean, you elected us to vote on issues and not have a public hearing on them before we vote on them. That's just my two cents. Maine Farmland Trust, Goat Hill.
So Meg Quinn, who is the event manager at Maine Farmland Trust, um, is reaching out to you guys. She would like to have a farm party to celebrate the protection of Goat Hill and the Romack part, uh, Romack property. Uh, they're looking at doing these maybe twice a year to celebrate land protection projects such as Goat Hill. Um, she thought it would be nice to hold such an event on the town side of it, and wonders, um, if you're open with, open to that. She would be working with Three Rivers to organize the event, and had a couple of dates, September 11th or 12th, and is just wondering if the board is open to those ideas.
Sounds, sounds good to me.
Yeah. I think following the same rules, that if it's going to be more than 100 people to get the mass gathering permit and make sure the insurance is there and up to date and.
Um, would you make them exempt from the mass gathering fee because it's town property, Goat Hill, or would you, because they're an outside entity, just using your land, charge them?
Oh, that's a good question.
Thank you.
They're celebrating the property that the town bought.
Right.
Right? Yeah, I'd make it exempt.
Okay.
Because it, it's not something they're going to do every year.
No, it looks like maybe twice a year.
Yeah, twice a year, right?
Yeah.
And this is assuming it's nonprofit. I mean, I, right?
Yeah, there's no, yeah, it's nonprofit.
They're not going to be selling lemonade or anything.
Yeah, but they said twice a year, but is that twice a year here, or is that just?
Oh, no.
Right, could be any land.
All over whatever land happens to be. So this might be a one-shot deal.
Okay. So I'll double-check, and, uh, so mass gathering and the required insurance for liability.
Yep.
Any preference on the day? Or let them pick?
They can pick. Court judgment.
Did you bring your copy, Kim?
I did not.
I think I have it.
I got it.
Do you want back?
No, this is, but I need some sort of action from you. This is, um.
You took it away from me.
A property that has been in non-compliance with code enforcement for building a portion of an addition, um, outside of the, what was allowed, without a permit. Um, I believe it's been ongoing for years. Is that correct to say?
I would say, yeah.
Uh, finally going through the courts, um, and the, the judgment, uh, the court is looking for your support on, or wants to know if you support that judgment before they notify the owners.
So, uh, there's no need to read it. You just gave the brief history.
Yeah, that's pretty, so, just, I would, I would just include what it, um, if you support it, what the fees and fines and so forth are. And the property owner will still have the right to come before you, but, um, the attorney needs your blessing on that judgment before he files it with the court.
So the defendant is assessed a penalty in the amount of $5,000 payable to the plaintiff, and shall reimburse plaintiff for its attorney fees and costs incurred in this matter in the amount of $1,805.53. The clerk shall enter this judgment on the civil docket by a notation incorporating it by reference pursuant to a bunch of letters and numbers.
So what's the date for to come into compliance?
The, they have, the defendant has until July 31st. I think that's supposed to be 2018. Unless it's, yeah, it should be 2018, to mitigate the zoning violation existing on property by removing the roof deck and said, constructed and said premises without the required permit.
Within the last three, probably three years, uh, the house that was torn down, would that be within the last three years?
Yeah.
Um, very similar, that the penalty was exactly the same, $5,000. The legal fees fluctuated because of the, you know, legal fees. Um, I personally don't see waiving from something that we've established in the past.
And the, um, the defendant did not appear in court.
Right. They, yeah, they, I mean, they're not, I'm all for working with someone as long as they work with us, um, that's, or works with the town, and that's, know what's happening, because we wouldn't be in court if they were.
Code enforcement said he, his office had 60, 50, 60 hours in.
Yes.
Over the extension of a deck.
Yep.
All right, I'll contact Minkowski and tell him to move forward unless there's objections.
Hate to be that hard on it, but it's something that we've done in the past, and.
I just want to make sure you guys had seen it and, um.
Yep.
Hear from you that you supported it or didn't.
Support to move forward.
Okay.
Okay, public comment.
Got to beat her to the podium.
Hi, Lois, miss you. I live on Mills Road. I, I don't mind you updating the codes as far as the 74 codes and stuff. I've lived here forever and a day. Black and Dennis, I think, we're about the oldest two in here at this point, that have lived here for a long time. Um, I personally think people, if you pay your taxes, mind your business. If it's not, if you, it's different if you're going to have your property surveyed and you want to sell it and you have issues. Normally, most of us get along with our neighbors as long as they tend to themselves, and I've learned a long this time ago, tend to yourself, they tend to, you tend to their stuff, you tend to yours, and there's no issues. It's when you start taking your nose and running it to somebody else's business is where the issues start. And it's time to put that to a bite, because there's a lot going on in town that you guys probably know or don't know. I'm about at my limit. So have a good day.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bruce Flaherty. I live in Augusta, Maine. I was visiting the family cottage today in Scarborough when I thought I'd ride over here. Uh, why I came by is with reference to a program that's very popular in York County and in a number of other municipalities in the state of Maine, Spirit of America Volunteer Recognition. The way the program works, Ed had sent a couple of emails earlier this year, is that, uh, the municipal governing body is given permission to pick, choose a recipient for outstanding community service, can be a person, project, or group. It's strongly encouraged, but it doesn't have to be, that it be the one to whom you dedicate your annual town report, honor the annual town meeting for outstanding community service. May I ask, before proceeding further, uh, your uptown, upcoming meeting is in next month. Have you already selected the recipient for, to whom your annual town report is dedicated?
Yes.
Well, no, not really. So, not for what, um, so Mr. Cashin, who received the last one, got the 17, 18.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So the fiscal year is, and Bruce and I, we've corresponded a few times. It's nice to see you, and you guys have seen his emails.
Yes.
Um, because I, I think we've just connected at the wrong time each year. So the fiscal year ends June 30th, and as soon as the fiscal year ends, the 1st, 1st of July, the board starts thinking about getting all their department heads to get the letters together to, you know, for the next fiscal year. So you haven't decided who your next one is going to yet.
You did last year, the one dedicated it?
For 17, 18, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We're getting ready to start fresh.
Okay, whatever you want. I'm just suggesting it might be the one to whom you dedicated last year's, or it could be one this year, whatever would work out easiest. And what happens is, um, York County commissioners, they host every year a beautiful ceremony. Uh, you, obviously, you know the commissioners, Greg Zinzer, Kathy Dumont, they do a beautiful job with the ceremony. And whoever you would pick would be the one recognized there. I, I believe it would be held, uh, this year in November. They do it in October, November. And there's a lot of information on the website that's out there, uh, S-P-I-R-O-A-F.com. There is no fee whatever to participate. It's something that, you know, uh, just a tremendous win-win situation for everyone. And the town so far in York County that I'm aware of this year, uh, last year there were eight that picked, and so far already, I'm aware that the towns of Cornish, Elliott, uh, Lyman, Newfield, uh, North Berwick, Old Orchard, Parsons Field have already picked recipients, and I'm sorry, I expect there will be more.
Sorry.
No, it's, it's not, it's not you, sorry.
No, you're, you're fine. You guys were whispering and it was being picked up. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Any questions you could answer while I'm chatting?
So the, I'm sorry, so you want the name by June 30th?
Yes.
So, maybe, I mean, and he already knows, but what harm does it do to pass his name along?
Right, it doesn't.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily have to be that name either, does it?
No.
No.
You're going to pick another name before June 30th?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for coming in.
Very welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to chat.
Do you want me to put it on next week to discuss, or what do you, what do you think?
Do we discuss so that, I mean, is it a surprise?
Is it supposed to be a surprise?
Could very well be whatever you wish, which is named task for you, whether it's a surprise.
Okay.
Okay.
Whatever works.
All right, so I don't know if we should.
All right, so four o'clock.
Okay.
Williams, Nine Sunset Boulevard. I know nothing in detail about this last, uh, item as far as court judgment. If I understood it correctly, 5,000 was the penalty for having broken the law, and the 1,000 some odd is for the legal charges. The town should also, in my opinion, send a bill for the expenses that the town had. That 5,000 should be frosting on the cake for his having broken the law, or her having broken the law. But the town should take the CEO's, uh, time into consideration and all the other aspects of the town expenses in order to come to this conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's generally what the fee is for, but he's got a point that, you know, you could do it in addition on top of the expenses, but that generally is what the fee is for, but.
Yeah. Seeing no further public comment, I'll move on to the announcements and upcoming meetings. Um, the Board of Selectmen office hours are the first, second, and third Thursday of each month from 7:00 to 8:00. June 5th, the Board of Selectmen meet at 5:00 PM. June 7th, Planning Board meets at 7:00 PM. June 12th, the state and town elections are 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and there will be no Board of Selectmen meeting, therefore, I think we're supposed to do something with Karen, so that'll get moved again.
Oh, yep.
No.
June 16th, Annual Town Meeting, 9:00 AM at the school. June 19th, Owl's Luncheon is at noon. On that same day, the Board of Selectmen meet at 5:00. June 21st, we have the Planning Board at 7:00 and the Recreation Committee at 7:00. June 26th, the Board of Selectmen meet at 5:00, and the Cemetery Committee, Cemetery Committee is on hold until September. Any other?
Just have one more thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I'd like to wish Elise a happy birthday today.
Woo-hoo!
Thank you.